All right, the board will reconvene into open session at 6:37 PM after consultation with our attorney. At this time, members of the board will move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is to hear and consider a Level Three complaint from Kayla Lane. In accordance with Sections 551.0821 and 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, which is commonly known as the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board should conduct this hearing in closed session. Ms. Lane, are you still requesting the board hear this grievance in open session?
It is. We will.
We will have an audio report. All right, the board is in open session to hear the appeal of the Level Three grievance followed by Kayla Lane. My name is Matt McKittrick. I'm President and Board of Trustees of Godly ISD. For the record, today is Monday, August 22nd, 2022. This proceeding will be taped recorded to ensure that an accurate record is kept. For the record, each person is asked to state their name, reason for attendance, and relationship to Ms. Lane if applicable. We will start with the board members. My name is Matt McKittrick. I'm President of the Board of Trustees, Godly ISD. No relation.
Craig Stevenson, Board Secretary. No relation.
Terry Goodlow, Board Member. No relation.
Krista Heiner, Trustee. No relation.
Marissa Abbott, Board Member. No relation.
Greg Miller, Board Member. No relation.
My name is Rhonda Crass. I'm the Attorney for the Board of Trustees and I'm not related.
Rhonda Crass, I'm the Attorney for Godly ISD Board of Trustees and I'm not in any way related to Ms. Lane. Ms. Lane, the last few of your representatives do come forward to the microphone and introduce yourselves, please.
Kayla Lane, Parent.
Marcy Galli, Parent Advocate.
Ms. Galli, could you please pass the microphone to Mrs. Pesco? And, Miss Pesco, you're representing the administration. Would you introduce yourself and let your team introduce themselves?
Hi, my name is Katie Pesco and I am an attorney for the District. I'll be representing the administration in this matter tonight.
Ron Hunt, Director of Safety and Moving.
Jason Gomes, Assistant Superintendent.
Rich Pierce, Superintendent. No relation.
All right, for the record, if the board is present, at this time, I would like to instruct all participants to please avoid talking when another person is speaking so that the tape recording will accurately reflect the proceeding. Further, please endeavor to make your oral statements as clear and complete as possible. Remember that the tape recording will not reflect gestures or any other form of non-verbal communications. This hearing will be conducted as an administrative presentation in accordance with the applicable policies and laws. It will be based on the record made from the previous hearings. The board members have been supplied a copy of this record in advance of this hearing. No new evidence shall be presented. This record includes the Level One complaint, any additional documents presented at Level One, the Level One response, and any documents the District relied upon to reach a decision at Level One; the Level Two complaint, any additional documents presented at Level Two, the Level Two responses, and any documents the District relied upon to reach a decision at Level Two; and finally, the Level Three complaint. This is not a formal legal proceeding and no strict rules of evidence or procedure will apply. This hearing is an appeal to the board regarding a Level Two conference at which the complainant's request for relief was denied or a response was not issued. Each party will have an opportunity to make its presentation to the board. The parties will not be permitted to cross-examine each other. There will be an opportunity for the members of the board to ask questions of counsel or any presenter. However, the members of the board are not subject to questioning by either counsel or any person in attendance. The board's decision must be supported by the record made from the previous hearings. A vote will be taken in open session following the hearing this evening. Because this is an appeal of the decisions of the District Level hearings, the complainant, Ms. Lane, will present her argument based on the record first and only the argument. This presentation will be followed by the administration's presentation. Ms. Lane and the administration will be allocated ten minutes each to make their presentations. Does anyone have any questions as to how this hearing will be conducted?
I would like to ask for seven minutes to reserve my three minutes.
To a vote per level.
That will be granted.
I would like to ask for seven minutes to reserve my three minutes.
To a vote per level.
That will be granted. Now that we have reviewed the procedures for this hearing, it is time to determine the qualifications of the board members to hear and consider this matter.
I will ask each member of the board whether you can consider the information presented at this hearing and make a decision in a fair and impartial manner. If any member of the board feels that he or she cannot do so, the board member should so state at this time and not participate in the hearing. Let the record reflect that each member of the board present has indicated that he or she can consider the information presented at this hearing and make a decision in a fair and impartial manner. Ms. Lane, who will be making the presentation?
Both of us.
Okay, you have ten minutes to make your presentation to the board. Rhonda Crass, Attorney for the Board of Trustees, will keep the time and will indicate to you when you have approximately two minutes left in your allotted time. Ms. Lane, you may proceed with your presentation at this time.
Okay, so since we requested seven minutes, could you let us know when we're at the five-minute mark, please? Excellent. Thank you. Regarding the Shack grievance for Kayla Lane, Second Step teaches transformative social-emotional learning, as evidenced on their own websites and copies were provided by Ms. Lane. All SEL programming containing lessons on attitudes, values, beliefs, and behaviors must be evaluated by the local Shack because the Shack responsibilities cover mental health and counseling among several other areas. Lexical semantics: Second Step is transformative social-emotional learning with social and racial justice components. The District is playing lexical semantics to try and prove that Second Step only serves as a character education program. That is not true. No changes to local or legal policies are being requested. The only request is for staff to follow the rules set by Texas Education Code 28.004, which references the Shack. If this District cannot differentiate between true character trait education and transformative SEL, there are bigger problems than what this grievance covers. Also, the DEIC meeting presented in these documents by the District is dated May 2022, well after the grievance was first filed. The character program mentioned is later in May. This is another program in addition to the SEL Second Step program.
I requested in my Level One and Level Two grievance that the District's social-emotional learning SEL curriculum, or Character and Leadership Development, as the District calls it, which includes mental well-being and mental health and behavioral health, to be run through the Shack, which is the School Health Advisory Committee. Most districts follow Texas Education Code 29.906 by running their SEL and character education curriculum through their Shack. And as evidence presented in my Level One and Level Two grievance have the Texas Education Codes 29.906, also the TEACs, Chapter 115 and 120. All of Chapter 120 is SEL, and also Texas Education Code 28.004. I am asking for anything that needs to be updated to be updated so that the District follows Texas Education Code 28.004 and runs their Second Step SEL Character Education Curriculum through the Shack. Section 28.004 of the Texas Education Code has local school health advisory council and health education instruction. In here, it mentions mental health components and also other components that are also covered in Second Step, such as behavioral health. And so, that falls under 28.004, which means the Shack should cover the Second Step curriculum, which they currently do not. Also, Texas Education Code 29.906 is our character traits instruction, which also follows into Second Step education as well. And I am just, like I said, I'm just asking for the school district to follow state Texas Education Code and to run their Second Step curriculum through the Shack. And honestly, I don't know why the District wouldn't want more parent involvement and have more parent eyes on such a critical and controversial curriculum. So if they really are proud of this curriculum, I would think they would want more parent involvement in the decision of that curriculum. Thank you. That's all we have for now. We'll preserve our other time for the rebuttal, please.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Members of the board, I'm going to ask that you vote your questions, if any, until the conclusion of the presentation by both sides. Dr. Neer, who will be making the presentation on behalf of the administration?
You'll be step back and give the power to the administration.
Ms. Pesco, you have ten minutes to make the presentation on behalf of the administration. Rhonda Crass, Attorney for the Board of Trustees, will keep the time and will indicate to you when you have approximately two minutes left in your allotted time. Ms. Pesco, you may proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, President McKittrick and members of the board. My name is Katie Pesco and I represent the administration at this Level Three grievance hearing. In her grievances, Ms. Lane claims that the District failed to obtain the advice of the Local School Health Advisory Council, also known as Shack, prior to adopting its Character and Leadership Development curriculum called Second Step, which she has been referring to as a social-emotional learning program. Ms. Lane alleges that the District's failure to obtain the advice of the Shack prior to adopting this curriculum is a violation of Texas Education Code 28.004. Further, Ms. Lane claims that the District's Education Improvement Committee's approval of the Second Step curriculum does not satisfy the District's obligations under the same part of the Texas Education Code. Ms. Lane is requesting that the board revise current District policy to require social-emotional learning curriculum, or SEL, to be approved by Shack. The administration is taking Ms. Lane's grievances seriously. Her claims to request a relief have been carefully reviewed and investigated. All cited legal authorities have been carefully analyzed and applied to the situation at hand, but it is still the administration's position that this grievance be denied. All timelines for the initial grievance decisions and appeals have been properly met. In both her Level One and Level Two grievances, Ms. Lane cites Texas Education Code Section 28.004 as legal basis for her complaint. She specifically alleges that Section 28.004 requires the board to elicit the advice of the Shack prior to adopting Second Step curriculum. Ms. Lane's contention fails for several reasons. First, in making her argument that Second Step is a social-emotional learning program and therefore must be run through Shack, Ms. Lane referenced a set of Shack guidelines from July 2015. Not only is this guide outdated, but neither the 2015 requirements nor the current updated 2022 requirements make any reference to the fact that social-emotional learning programs must be run through the Shack. In fact, neither the 2015 nor the 2022 guidelines even make reference to social-emotional learning programs nor Character and Leadership Development programs. Texas Education Code Section 28.004 only requires the board to obtain the advice of the Shack prior to adopting curriculum materials regarding two specific areas. These areas are, one, human sexuality instruction, and, two, child abuse, family and dating violence, and sex trafficking instruction. These are the only things that are required to be run through Shack. There are other types of areas that may be run through Shack, but this is not one that is required to be run through Shack. Only human sexuality instruction and child abuse, family and dating violence, and sex trafficking instruction, none of which does this Character and Development program fall into. The Second Step curriculum being taught at Godly ISD does not fall into the categories requiring Shack review. The District's Curriculum Committee's primary purpose in implementing this Second Step program is because of this program's character and leadership development aspects. The Second Step program is on the TDA's list of approved character education programs and is considered a TEAC's graduation requirement. The Second Step curriculum does not fall under Second. Section 28.004 of the Texas Education Code because it is not considered human sexuality instruction. Further, Ms. Lane seems to have concerns that the community did not have input in selecting the Second Step program. However, although it's not a requirement under the law at issue, the District chose to obtain community input on the Second Step curriculum. In order to ensure that local community values were reflected in the curriculum, the District sought the advice of the District Educational Improvement Committee, or the DEIC. The DEIC here is made up of community members, parents, and Godly ISD employees. The committee reviewed and approved the Second Step curriculum. Therefore, because the Second Step curriculum is not considered human sexuality instruction, the District was not required to obtain the approval of the Shack prior to implementing this program. The District obtained community input regarding the curriculum and complied with all applicable laws and regulations. What it comes down to here is that Ms. Lane is requesting something that the District legally does not have to do. The District could choose to run this program through Shack, but it has instead decided to run it through its DEIC. For this reason, the administration respectfully requests that the board deny Ms. Lane's grievance and uphold the Level Two decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pesco. Ms. Lane?
Ms. Lane, you have six minutes remaining. Again, Ms. Crass will keep the time and will indicate to you when you have approximately two minutes left in your allotted time of six minutes.
Hello again. Okay, so one of the points that I would like to make about Second Step is that in your paperwork, page 147, is an actual copy of the Second Step program. And you can see where it talks about implementation to incorporate diversity and equity in social justice work into your classroom's SEL plan. Also, I wanted to make mention, page 149, was a request that I had made to the school district for Second Step and Committee for Children documentation invoices and purchase orders. This was not included in the book, but just my request. But what I did receive back was full of social-emotional learning, and that is Second Step.
Also, part of that request, we requested Second Step documents. It had a list of committee members that were falling under the DEIC. One of the parents I happened to know on that list, I asked her if she had ever been invited to a District Improvement Committee meeting or any SEL Character Leadership Development Curriculum review, and she had no idea what I was talking about. So I would really like an accurate list of those members. And furthermore, I would just ask that the District be open and transparent about this curriculum and a school health advisory committee that deals with mental health, and which Second Step is full of mental and emotional health. I think it makes perfect sense for that curriculum to run through the Shack, which is supposed to be dealing on behavioral and mental health. That's it. Thank you.
I do just have one more point I'd like to make. Rather than government bodies being required to do things by law, go a Second Step or a Third Step. Go beyond what's required by law. I've served as a public official, and that was my goal, not to just meet the state legal requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Ms. Pesco, you have five minutes remaining.
I don't have much to say in rebuttal. The only thing that I do want to reference is that whether you characterize the Second Step program as Character and Leadership Development or as social-emotional learning, I think it's very clearly stated in the Texas Education Code that these two areas are not required to be run through the Shack. As I stated before, there are two things that need to be run through the Shack, and that is human sexuality, which these do not fall under, and that is family and dating violence, human trafficking. This program does not fall into either of those categories, and for that reason, the District did not have to run it through Shack. It could have if it chose to, but it instead chose to run it through the DEIC. Whether or not everyone agrees with that decision is really not for question, but the District made its decision to run it through the committee that ran it through, and it was well within its rights to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Pesco. Members of the board, are there any questions that we need to address? If there are no questions from the board members, this concludes the proceeding. At this time, the board will go into executive session to deliberate and consider the information presented. No decision will be made in closed session. Following the board's deliberation, the board will reconvene in open session. Are there any objections to the board returning to executive session to deliberate?
I had a question for Ms. Lane. I noticed in your evidence in your packet and appeals that you said a couple times that you were a parent, specifically a part of a parent coalition in Texas. Exactly what coalition was that?
Moms for Liberty.
Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Pesco. From an administrative and legal perspective, is the District legal?
The District is legal. It is applying all relevant laws.
I also have a question for the administration. If we wanted to survey and see if other districts are running similar curriculum through Shack or other committees, have we done that? If so, which school districts were surveyed and how do they do it?
Yes, ma'am. So we surveyed Cleveland, King, Reavista, Burleson, Grandview, Joshua, Alvarado, Slidell, Aubrey, Springtown, Monroe Wells, Quinn Rose, Albor, and Steenfield, and none of them ran SEL through the Shack. Is that what you asked?
Yes, ma'am. So we surveyed Cleveland, King, Reavista, Burleson, Grandview, Joshua, Alvarado, Slidell, Aubrey, Springtown, Monroe Wells, Quinn Rose, Albor, and Steenfield, and none of them ran SEL through the Shack. Is that what you asked?
Are there any further questions on that? Do I have a motion on the appeal of the Level Three grievance?
I move that the board deny the Level Three grievance of Mrs. Lane hereby holding the decision of the Level Two hearing officer.
I'll second it. I have a motion by Terry and a second by Dennis. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. The board has voted to deny the Level Three appeal of Ms. Lane, thereby upholding the decision of the Level Two hearing officer. Ms. Lane, you will receive written confirmation of this decision. Okay, at this time, members of the board will move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is to hear and consider a Level Three complaint from a parent. In accordance with Sections 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, which is commonly known as the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board will conduct this hearing in closed session. We will adjourn into closed session at this time to meet. The time is 7:03 PM.
I had a question for Ms. Lane. I noticed in your evidence in your packet and appeals that you said a couple times that you were a parent, specifically a part of a parent coalition in Texas. Exactly what coalition was that?
Moms for Liberty.
Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Pesco. From an administrative and legal perspective, is the district legal?
The district is legal. It is requiring all relevant laws.
I also have a question for administration. If we wanted to survey and see if other districts are running similar curriculum through SHAC or other committees, have we done that? If so, which school districts were surveyed, and how do they do it?
Yes, ma'am. So we surveyed Cleveland, King, Rio Vista, Burleson, Grandview, Joshua, Alvarado, Slidell, Aubrey, Springtown, Monroe Wells, Quinn Rose, Al Gore, and Steenfield, and none of them ran SEL through the SHAC. Is that what you asked?
Are there any further questions on that? Do I have a motion on the appeal of the Level 3 grievance?
I move that the board deny the Level 3 grievance of Mrs. Lane, thereby upholding the decision of the Level 2 hearing officer.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Terry and a second by Dennis. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. The board has voted to deny the Level 3 appeal of Ms. Lane, thereby upholding the decision of the Level 2 hearing officer. Ms. Lane, you will receive written confirmation of this decision. Okay, at this time, members of the board will move to agenda item number five, which is to hear and consider a Level 3 complaint from a parent. In accordance with Sections 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, which is commonly known as the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board will conduct this hearing in closed session. We will adjourn into closed session at this time to meet. The time is 7:03 PM.
Well, I guess whatever's happening tonight, you're seeing that tomorrow, you're still right. I'm gonna handle it. So the rest of them, they just have to come here. I appreciate it. Because if he gets one more card, then he'll be here. The reason it's coming in with this... I don't like that they do, but it's just like, no, they have to start with them for that, so.
Double check it.
I think we have.
I know, that's what I'm saying. Listen, Lane, I'm gonna go talk to her on the way she got. I mean, I'm... I mean, I'm... Maybe you can give her a... Right, that's what I'm saying. Exactly. It's true, and I'm afraid I told him. Not to come back. Oh, I'm gonna look at her a little. I'm tired. Well, I got around some of them. Grab a shirt, so I'm wearing my... I'm like, I don't know, I just kept my jeans on at this point.
Tell them to... Tell them to Patrick in Florida. But it's a Space Force base.
Oh, Esha, how does he like that?
He doesn't. Because there's really not any assets. They're going to guard. Although they have watched. People thought they'd seen before, they thought it was Air Force 2. But it was really the communications plane. It goes up in Air Force One this year. It was not really even designated anything, but it's big. It was big with something I said. 737. It's a big plane. And we were on base with him when the plane was there. But you can't give... All the posters on the base say Space Force Base. And he is Air Force. He is Air Force. Yeah. And so, and then the other thing was that... So he says his base also supports the Navy. But he said, "All Cape Canaveral's guards," or "He's security force." So the guards there are DOD employees. So they're not even at least... And they call them civilians. Their base is... They're civilians. And so he gets mad because they're unionized. So I think people in there that don't know what they're doing, they... He could... One time they asked him if he wanted to go to Cape... And he said, "No." Like, now he wishes to have.
Oh, yeah.
And he gets the, he gets, when he's, when he's guarding things, you know, on patrol? But, you know, there's, there's the desk jobs, and then there's the gate job, and then there's the patrol. When he's on patrol, they gotta patrol the beach.
Oh. That's a tough one.
He's, he's, uh...
Working on his tan.
October.
I would say, yeah, that's... Yeah, he's another, yeah.
So, uh, remember, he has, he's a... So, all of those counties, they have properties. This strip of the beach is a county. It's short. So two hundred yards. And the rest of the beach is a county. But they all go to the beach. So they patrol. I've instructed a lot of people, a lot of things.
Lots of things.
Same things, can't unsee.
That's right.
He said, like... What, one time, it was, it was a couple hundred dollars. And they, uh...
I probably have to walk these up. I couldn't think of getting anywhere else.
It's midnight in public beach. But, uh, anyway, so, like, they bait on the cars, and Air Force Security get out, come out, you know, while... There do get some, a lot of people.
Oh, well, you know.
And standing there.
Just, you know, here we are.
Hands on. He's like, "We should agree on..." And he goes, and he thinks, like, he goes, "We've had..." But then, because he's very much... But sometimes there's, I don't know, mine, rear. But it's like, technically, if you kick somebody with marijuana, you're supposed to write them up on some stuff. A certain amount, you know, to take them in. And so, I guess.
Right, I was gonna say.
So usually, they just kind of, they'll write a report, say it was, they, they rent somebody off or something. We've seen people that are so thrilled, like, on Sunburn Friday. Wasn't it just about that? Because you know, it'd be, it'd be a little fun to not hear you. And they're just fried, simple, blistered, and just everything.
Is it recreational? You go down there in Florida? I don't mount now, not in Florida.
Of course, you know, he's, what, three hours from Miami, so... I don't think he needs to believe. So, anyway, it's, it's, his house. His house is actually great. So we ever, you ever just transfer? Beginning to rent, you know, Airbnb? Because he's, he's, uh, forty-five minutes from, oh, I know where. At least, like, forty-five minutes from, you know, for an hour. He's forty-five minutes from, uh, SeaWorld. Then he's twenty-five minutes from Coco Beach. He's twenty minutes, twenty, twenty-five minutes from Cape Canaveral. Who, uh, Cape Canaveral has the cruise ships coming in. And so, like, he's like, since he's... And he's one, two hours away. Who's the other taxman?
That's what I've heard. I wouldn't do it. If you didn't, you'd like my time. Everything they need. Well, and... I know it's...
Never end, there's...
Once I thought of, I was seeing my pedal.
No, one time he just had half an ounce.
Not, not at all.
Remember after...
Yeah, he used to be his friend. He said, "Hey, we got the job." Yeah. He's pretty good on all the stuff. And he's like, torn eye.
So.
Jake, I'm creating a morse. It's Joey Jones working with us out there. I'm.
Well, yes. Yeah.
Yeah. I bet you. I think. The special partnership. But I have. Yeah, yeah. But I guess. So that's. Uh. I need your full two man. Those. We. He's trying to make this very. To the bow. That. To be. So what's going to do is. They can. Can't. So. All person. So. So they said. That was the last. They gave up. So. At this. Thank you. Unless. She was. Crazy. Crazy. Water. They just couldn't.
Yeah.
My. Car. That's. Well. For a while. Tea. But then. New. Someone. Never got. I believe. You think that. We were.
What?
Brother. That. Their. Hey. What? Oxygen. Come through. And. Together. So. I love. Our. And. I don't like. Get. And. It's not. There was. Those aren't. It's pretty. Yeah. I. Just. This. We. Box. Thank you so much. Shit dude. Glad you. Good as well. I'm. To be. Pressure. Be. Been a big deal. Also. Don't like it.
Well, I was. Very. Very. Calm. Scram. Back. It's. It's. Yeah. Story. Happened. Does. You want. This. Really. Really. Maybe. So. Yes. This. And. So. Good. It's hard to say.
Yeah. Well, I think that is. But. Yes. 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 If. Want. To. That.
Yeah. Do. Yeah.
What?
All things.
Hi. Oh. It's. Hey. Right. Just said it. I'm not. I'm not. Yes. Just. How much. Is. I. Said. After. That. Right.
Thank you.
Sorry. Think we'll take practice off.
I didn't. Show that. So.
Okay.
I know. Thank you.
The board is going to come. Session. They're going to take a short restroom break. And. Jerse. All the. Things. Everything. Has to be taken. Yeah.
What.
He was. He's way over on the.
Yeah, I heard.
You go back.
Just. Now. Sorry. Let me just go back up there.
I thought she wanted that seat.
Nope. My. Always. Rear. Got it. He should.
And.
Yep. Our. Party. This week. Monday and Friday. Something. Make up. They're not asking. They'll be done. Home. Someone got home. Good. They'll be. Done.
The board is now repeating an open session after agreeing a level three appeal followed by apparently closed session. The time is now seven fifty five. In accordance with chapter five five one of the text of the document code, any action regarding this matter must be taken in open session. We'll have a motion on a level three complaint.
I move that the board deny the appeal of this rain. Therefore. I call your decision of the level two very much.
One second.
I have a motion by Dennis and a second by Marissa. Is there any discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Motion passage unanimous. We will now move to the next.
Dr. Dear, you'll need to return to the. Dallas. Take your place.
The board has voted to deny the level three appeal of this lane thereby upholding the decision of the level two hearing officer. This lane, you will receive written confirmation of this decision. We will now go into the regular board meeting open session portion. And at this time, we will have a budget hearing. Uh. Executive Director Finance Brian Myers will present the annual budget hearing to the board. The time is seven fifty seven and we will now open the public hearing. Um. To discuss the annual budget.
This year, this time of the year where we passed the budget for general fund, interest and seeking fund and the food service fund. On the screen, you can see, starting from the left, the general fund. The middle is the food service fund and on the right is the debt service fund. Far right will be the blue, that will be the total of all funds provided. Um. General fund, we have a balanced budget with about thirty three million. Thirty three million in revenues and thirty three million in expenses, expenditures. So we have a balanced budget in the general fund. Special revenue fund of food service, we have. Revenues of one point six million, expenditures of one point six million and we'll have a balanced budget, so we'll adopt a balanced budget for the food service. The debt service fund, we have revenues of seven million, expenditures of nine point nine million. So we are adopting a deficit budget for the interest and seeking fund, which we have. Um. Unbalanced to cover that deficit. Uh. Next slide, I just want to show you all kind of a overall general fund recap. So we spend seventy eight, almost close to eighty percent of our general fund revenues on salaries. And then the smoke break, rest of the breakdowns, you can see six percent on contract services, seven percent supplies. Um. And the other operating expenses, we have about one percent and debt service and capital outlay. So. Um. It's kind of all we had for the, for the hearing. So we will, um, request, and I'll go back to that slide, that we. Um. Adopt the budget, general fund, food service fund and debt service fund.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Being no questions, we will close the public hearing. The time is eight P M. We will now move into stakeover communication.
Good evening, everybody. Do you need update on the elementary school? Quick. Yeah. Is that better right there? Can you hear me? Update for the elementary school. All right. Back at the last board meeting, this is area one, where you can see on the left, we're just starting to develop some of the millwork and set it in. Yes. Would it be better if I'm over here? How about that? Uh. In this slide right here, you can see where we've got the millwork set, a little bit more finished out. Similar picture, go ahead. Area two, just another representation of here that we've, we're originally getting the carpet in, we get some ceilings going in, we've just dropped all the ceiling tile here. Got some lines burning now and we're still doing finished paint under it, but the ceilings are going in, air conditioning is burning or is running. Area three, which is the main open area, the dining room and the public space area over here in July, you can see we're just still putting in some framing and sheet rock and. Uh. In this picture here, this is taken just the other day, we've got lights burning, more ceilings done, some of the Viva railings and the glass is going in and some of the finished paint going on. Area four, uh, little additional, starting to set all the plumbing fixtures. Here, we're representing, we're showing that the flooring is down, the resinous flooring, epoxy, which lets us go ahead and set all the plumbing fixtures. Again, same thing, light fixtures, ceiling tile, air conditioning. Area five, as we're walking back towards the kitchen, state area, multipurpose, you can see all the duct work starting to get insulated up above. Here also, same thing, a little more finishes being applied, all the tile work back in the back kitchen, windshield's been installed, cooler and freezer is set in there and we're, uh, also the flooring is done. Get. Uh. Storm shelter progress, here we have one painted. Well, I don't know. Duct tees where we've gone in, haven't painted, over here, we have done all the painting, sports equipment's starting to be installed, basketball goals, all the supports and straps, we got a divider curtain, uh, getting that all done right now, the duct work sitting on here will start to be installed. This is the area three by the overhead, the big doors, we're in Lea, these are the representation of the profile for the trees, separate the dining room from the library area. Picture of today, elevator cab installed, it's up and running and we've got to do some things to do our finishes and come back and as soon as we be at about another week and a half, we'll call for an elevator inspection. So good news, getting the elevator in, that's been a long time coming, missing some parts, so that's all been taped down. We did fair really well today on the rain, so we had very minimal effing water getting in the building, so we took a lot of steps over the weekend, everybody put together to keep the water out of the building. Any questions?
Yes, sir, I have multiple for you.
Yep.
So yesterday was out there on the premises, lots of windows, still setting in crates, um, so why are we putting the windows in?
Why aren't we putting them in?
Yeah, why aren't we putting them in yet?
Some of the frames that were missing, those with the glasses out there in the, in the pallets, and so all of that's going back and forth. So there are pallets that have some glass out there that are waiting for frames, whether they're inside, or door vestibules, or lights in some of the classrooms, but we're feverishly working with that sub, trying to get everything done.
Okay, secondly, at one of the previous meetings, uh, I believe September thirty, was advertised as a substantial completion date. That's about forty days away from now, is that still a good date?
Uh, October seventh is the, is the last revised date. It slipped a week. What's that?
Yes, it slipped a week. Yes, it slipped a week.
Are there any questions? Okay. So, how's the high school going?
High school's going great. We have a little bit different format since we're taking big aerial photos, it's hard to see the details, so we'll kind of start with the last, last month's aerial, and then proceed with the, the next month's. So as you can see, it's CTE building, um, only approximately forty percent of the grade beams, um, and about eighty percent of the piers were installed at this time, and then following up with this month, you can see that now we're closing in on about eighty percent of the grade beams, and a hundred percent of the piers have been drilled at the CTE building. We've also graded out on the far north end, the, uh, the road that's going to go down and eventually tie in at the track surface, and of course, the temporary bleachers have been brought in, uh, for the first month's games here in this picture. Uh, last month's update, we'd only done the excavation and finished out the, uh, subgrade prep over at the arena. We had started opening up some holes for the storm brain relocation on the far east end, and, uh, we had staged and started bringing our water pipes in for the, for the, uh, new relocated water line that currently runs directly into this side of the, the, arena foundation there. As you can see, as of this month, uh, all the pier drilling activities, uh, we've, uh, as of last week, reached about ninety percent of the pier drills, uh, have been completed and installed, and fortunately with the rain, this whole area has now filled up with water, so we'll be pumping water starting tomorrow to mitigate and get the water out there, let us dry out, get back to, back to drilling, and, uh, we will soon follow that up with the grade beam prep, start tying and forming grade beams. Uh, the connector road over from the Ag Barn, back around to the tennis courts, here you can see where we've excavated for the roadway itself, um, the spoils left, uh, by Hellis Contracting out there, we have started relocating, um, the gas line easement, which is just south of, uh, excuse me, east adjacent to the, to the roadway excavation, um, we've now been released to be able to work inside the easement limits, so we will be remobilizing out here and continue grading and working in that area. This is a secondary shot coming back around, tying back into the high school parking lot. Um, you can see the excavation truck actually out there in the distance hauling, hauling another load. These spoils are being relocated over here to the left side of the picture, where we're actually doing the grade, grade out, uh, for future, future practice rooms, that'll be turf based. Any questions on the high school?
On schedule, the high school schedule or the high school schedule on the arena and CTE?
We are on schedule on the CTE. The arena is facing a couple of, um, schedule pressures right now, that we think we're going to come up with ways around them. As soon as we get turned completely loose, there are some issues pertaining to JSA with regards to working in their easement, and an active water line that currently surfaces the canvas that needs to be relocated before we can continue working in the arena. Uh, we have temporary construction activities in the arena to help mitigate that impact. Uh, we've released our scheduling department this week and do a full impact study on that. I don't anticipate it to be detrimental to the schedule, but we should have an update on that next quarter.
I have one more. So on the road between the, at the project center, the exhaust center, and the high school, on the high school end, there is orange construction fence to keep people from driving on that non-roadhead, but on the other end, it's not blocked off at all, and I happened to notice that after a little bit of rain, there are quite a bit of like traps coming from that area, that's going down that project road. Is there way, is something else to keep people off of that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I have a question, but it's not necessarily for our construction teams, or for Mr. Flood, and how we're utilizing, are you just, is this appropriate time to ask him, or like? Mr. Flood, how are we accommodating our tennis players getting back and forth over there since our roadway is still under construction?
Yeah, uh, sorry, I can't answer, lights went out. So we scheduled tennis to be first period and last period of the day, so that they can start practice earlier, and start over there, and then drive to school when their practice ends, and then drive over there during the period and finish practice through after school. So that's the first way we accommodate to get over there, and then, we have lots of facilities around here, so when it rains, or when it's something like that, Coach Jones can just meet the kids over here, and they can just work out, you know, I don't know, I don't know what it's called, but exercise over here, um, whatever he does with them, where they can make it to the courts right now. So, uh, you know, when the road gets done, it'll make it nice, but, you know, even S&amp;P was talking earlier about just like a flex-based walking path from the Ag facility to get over there, so kids can walk over there, and they can still walk, and it's not just pure mud, so, so yeah.
Yeah, that was going to be my follow-up question. What, what are we planning to do to accommodate students getting in and out without tracking mud all over the course?
It's a great question. It was a concern that we identified, you know, after having rained for the first time in six months, um, and I brought it up to Mr. Flood just today, and said, I'd like to talk to you guys, maybe later, about a logistics plan, could we utilize parking at the, at the Ag Barn for tennis players to access if we were to build a temporary walkway of some sort, to get them from there to the tennis courts? Uh, he, he was open to the idea, but we'd of course have to run that by Mr. Gear at some point. Mr. Gear, now you're, you're getting notification, and we had that conversation, so, um, I'll be, I'll be asking you about that this time. Any other? Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
Okay, that's it, just a couple.
Next, we'll move into superintendent reports.
All right, the kids showed up. We're at, sit at twenty-seven seventy-one, that's still eleven hundred and forty-three kids, a little over five percent, and they're still coming, right Dana? And we'll, we'll still get a steady slow, a steady flow, and we'll get another pretty decent influx around Labor Day, so we'll have a, a lot better idea of where we'll be sitting at the next board meeting. You go to the next one, you see that we're, we're still climbing, not percentage-wise, not quite as much as last year, but we're sure, still having that weight. You look at the next one, you can kind of see of the, a look by month, so we're sitting twenty-seven seventy-one, quite a few up from the very first day of school, as you can see. And then the next one, you can see, it's not really apples to apples, because RBG and Legacy had a different structure, grade structure last year, but you kind of see where we're sitting, and all those pleasant folks are in Legacy and RBG in the sixth grade campus, so those, the actual numbers on the campus are much higher than those, but that's what their specific enrollment is. And that's just to look at, um, our movement, as you guys know, we, our, our kids come and go quite a bit, if you look at the bottom left corner, that's, all that movement is before the first day of school, so pretty much, Dan, you say during the summer, all that movement are since?
It's, it's, yeah, a couple of weeks before the first?
A couple of weeks before the first day of school, so you see that we have four hundred and fifty new students, but a hundred and ninety left, so that's kind of how it evens out, and, um, we'll bring you another, part of those, is that seventy-two to two, is that, since the first day of school?
Yes, that's August tenth to today.
Okay. So you kind of see our, they do a, quite a bit of business over in Dana's office with our kids coming and going. And that's look at our attendance. So for the first month, it's not too bad, what was China? We're going to keep it at that level, right Dana? Ninety-six, okay?
We have, um, nine more that have already been, no, eight more that we already put in this afternoon, we've got about fifteen in the bucket, which means they've done their online, but haven't come to us to finish, so I mean, and we have kids in there.
So we've already got twenty-four more than that number that we can show here?
Yes, sir.
They keep coming, so, any questions about enrollment?
More about attendance. So this is a good start for attendance, I realize we're only halfway through August, we're not complete yet, I get it, I'd be an early, uh, early indicator, uh, this is substantially better than the last couple of years, so we're thinking that as a positive. Um, so what are we doing so far to try to encourage kids to be in class? They can't learn if they're not in class.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, we do have a new program and that fortuitously, and they're going to be getting emails, um, with their accent, and then we also have through school messenger, every time high school or middle school miss a period, we're going to send out a phone call, and then in the, the lower campuses, they'll get a phone call every day that they're absent. So y'all might have people complaining that they're going to get a lot of, um, phone calls and emails, but we're trying to let them know if your kid's at school.
So just confirming, the emails, phone calls going to parents or guardians, as opposed to the senior that's not showing up, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Marty, with technology up there.
Okay, so we've been, we've been busy, really busy. Uh, the good news is, the new website is live, and so we're up now as of Friday, Friday late afternoon, so it is, you go to godlyguy dot net, you'll see the new site, it's still a work in progress, but Jeff has been working super hard on it, and it looks great, it's coming along very well. Uh, on that note, ClassLink is live as well, we've got to start the year with ClassLink, mostly up and running, it is handling all of our account creation, and, uh, we are still working through some little backend pieces of it, but we do have the portal active, it is fully functioning, it's just a matter of us connecting the dots of all the third-party apps that moves through right now that we're working on. Uh, past that, the ClassWise monitoring is in position as well, we've already been receiving reports, state reports through ClassWise on the monitoring, so that's working great for us. Little sis has said that we have one thousand three hundred and fifty-seven classes currently here in Godly, that number's a little high, because whenever we have any kind of, uh, online class, especially the classroom, you know, that moves through, it does bump up through that count, but I thought it was kind of an interesting statistic to how many classes we actually teach here across the district, it's, it's a lot, we have a handful of people doing a lot of work for us, it's, it's a full number. Next to it there, that graph breaks down those classes for us, so you can kind of see, we are still holding pretty steady around nineteen, twenty enrollment in most of our classes, so I, I thought it was a cool slide, I wanted to share that, just, you know, the, the data that we're pulling in now is a lot of insight for us. Okay, let's go to the next slide.
Hey, wait, wait, I'm sorry, where are you going? You knew you was going to get a question, tell me on it. So I see, looks like six classes that have twenty-seven or above students in them, uh, but you're on the spot, what are those classes? That's a very large class size, so that's a good start, just fill me out.
You can't forget about those band classes, PE classes, athletics classes, those things are quite large, and so that's where most of that comes in, that's why, uh, you can see on the scale there, it's really just a little dot, that's what it's counting on that. So I think our largest class was a band class, it had around sixty-seven students in it, so.
Okay, so just confirming, we don't have any of our, I'll call them core, our math, our English, our history, our sciences, or that kind of thing, with a twenty-seven or above?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then the next slide, jumping into our stats for the beginning of the year. Uh, we have our, our top six apps there, most of those were updates, unfortunately, coming through, because everything's been asleep for the summer, so when you're looking at like the iTunes App Store and computer security, that's that big information flowing through as things get vacuumed and back online. What was interesting about this, what's different from us from years before, is that next little bit, the transfer rate, we are actually getting one point two megs, or, or gigs, I'm sorry, uh, twelve hundred megs, which we'd never hit before, it's an amazing number. Uh, I'd say, uh, it's really rough math, but that's about thirty percent higher than we were at our highest point last year, so, so it's definitely the students we had in for sure, and that is kind of our technology update, and that's shown, unless you have any other questions. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Marty. Next is transportation.
So our RSO count is up one this month, hopefully that'll go back down, um, that's just, we have new people moving into the area, we're working on our new routes for when we get to Pleasant View back up, or opening up. The next slide is, that's just our student count for the first week and half school, or the first few days of school we've had, so we have substantially grown a little bit. We're transporting, the first day of school, we transported eight hundred and thirty-five kids, we're now up to nine hundred and eleven kids in the afternoons, we have several buses that are carrying over fifty students, so we're going to be hoping for buses, which we are getting, that are on their way, which we're super excited about, and I do have one new hire trainer that's going to be starting class tomorrow, and then, um, I have another potential candidate for maintenance that's wanting to get his CDL as well, so that will help us out tremendously. The next slide has that on there, and then we have potentially some new routing software coming in. That's all I have.
So she says the new routing software coming in, she really doesn't mention that they had to open school without any less routing software, so I can't remember how they did it without software, but really got to hand it to Tammy and her team that she was able to start school.
Thank you. That was tough, but we got through it, so teamwork's held up.
I have a quick question, do we have a monitor on each bus?
I do not have a monitor on each bus, I would love to have a monitor on each bus, I cannot get them committed to do that on a daily basis.
So would you say half of our buses have monitors?
No.
Less than half?
Less than half.
What could we do to entice people to leave the bus? I think, for a safety perspective, I think it's a really great idea to have a monitor on the bus, so that the bus driver can be, one hundred percent beneficial on driving. Maybe we can bring some ways to entice.
We used to have, um, one of our teachers did it, but it's getting harder and harder because they have to leave class early, and we're, we're trying to stay away from that, and that's, that's, that's one challenge.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, one more question, you may have mentioned it, how many routes right now?
We're still currently running twenty routes in one shuttle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Collins and Dr. Cottle, talk to us a little bit about Seabass.
And don't step on the cords, right?
All right, well, good evening again, so we're excited, we're not working?
I don't.
Now we're working. Hey. All right, so we're excited again tonight to bring you the next chapter of our community-based accounting. All right, so we're excited again tonight to bring you the next chapter of our community-based accountability system. We've brought the key questions over the last few months and indicated that we're gonna show you some, our initial attempts at signaling. It's a little messy. It's a little, it's interesting. It's fun work, actually. And so just to, I've actually got a couple of, I'll grab them out of my backpack here. I have a couple of magazine-type documents, one from Sunnyvale ISD, one from Burke Burnett ISD. I want to show you to give you kind of an end goal of where we're working to get to when we are able to report out on all seven pillars. So but tonight, we're signaling on three. The principals are gonna come up here in just a moment and go over that where you can see our major changes, what that looks like. And then coming up in the upcoming months, we'll go a little bit more in depth with that signaling to be able to tell you what is our sunset date on some of those things. Like for example, you're gonna see a major change that's around American Reading Company and that reading initiative, and it's just taking time. And so to see that sunset date at the very end, how long we anticipate that it's gonna take to fully implement that change. And so then as we go along, we'll be able to come back and indicate whether we're on track, whether we're falling behind, whether we're, you know, hit roadblocks, whatever the case may be. So, but yeah, so we're gonna show that to you in just a second. But so first, Dr. Cottle has some survey information.
So the first step in community accountability is looking at a needs assessment. So at the end of last year, we sent out a survey to all of the district parents and staff members, and we just felt that some of the data was gonna drive our decision-making, drive what we're gonna do this year to help us make sure that we know exactly what areas we need to focus. So one of the first questions we asked in our survey was, how do we define success in Godly ISD? We offered these options and asked people to rank them in order of what was most important to what was least important. And on this survey, this is the elementary parents. You can see that green line was in the top one or two things that was most important to our parents. That green line is student character and leadership skills. So our parents define success by whether we're teaching our students character and leadership. Number two is the blue line, which is individual student growth based on our local assessments and what our teachers are observing in the classroom. So we really feel like that's a great indicator of what we feel is important in Godly, and that's what our parents are supporting as well. As we go down the line, homeschool relations was number three, followed by extracurricular. And coming in last overwhelmingly, ninety-seven percent of our parents ranked star scores as the last thing that was important to them to define success at our elementary level. Likewise, secondary school looked very similar. We did see extracurricular kind of bumped up a little bit more. It was more prevalent up in the two, three, four. But again, character and leadership skills, character and leadership development was number one, followed by individual student growth, extracurricular, and then star scores. So we feel like that really validates what we're focusing on here in Godly, that community-based accountability is the most important thing to our district. And our staff survey reflected the very same thing. Some other data we wanted to share, so we asked overall how our community felt like we were doing in the three areas that we're focusing on, our three key questions, which are student safety and wellbeing, student engagement and effective staff. And this was just an overarching question. And we did ask them to tell us where they were going to school next year so that the principals would have some baseline data based on the parents that were coming to them. So as we look across, the parents that are at RB Godly, the parents who are at Legacy, and again, we're gonna see on the next slide, the parents that are at Pleasant View, we're in the eighty, high eighties and nineties with how well they feel that we're doing when it comes to safety, engagement, and effective staff. And there's the Pleasant View one, again, up in the high eighties. And then at the secondary level, and that encompassed all students going into sixth through twelfth grade, we always see a little bit of a dip when it comes to secondary schools can start to get, they get into lots of different areas and things like that, but we're still feel like, I mean, we're right there at the seventy to high seventies. So we know that we're gonna continue to focus on these three areas across the board, but it gives us a good baseline to look for growth going into the end of this next school year and the following school year. As you know, our state accountability did come out last week, and many districts put that out. We felt like it was important for us to share this right along with all of the community-based accountability. We don't put any more stock in star data than we do safety, security, and student engagement. We do have good news to report that we are, overall as district, we made improvements across the board. We are ranked as a B, and we have Bs across the board, closing the gap to commit a C, but that was growth from twenty-nineteen, which was the most recent similar year that we had accountability. Looking at our campuses, again, all of them showed improvement, all of them showed growth, and all of them are at an acceptable level according to the state. So those are our ratings at the campus level. And that is our, that is our needs assessment.
I'm gonna ask the, go ahead and ask the principals to come up here as well. So here is engaged, well-rounded students. This was one of the first pillars that we presented to you. And so you'll see listed our key questions that we brought to you. Those are listed on the left. Campuses are listed across the top, and the changes that we're, that we're working on. So. Y'all good?
Yeah.
So, so across the top, you know, so the colors, you can see red indicating major change, yellow minor change, and blue we're gonna maintain. So I'm gonna turn it over to the principals now and let them speak to what these major changes are and what they're doing.
Can I ask a quick question? Are we gonna do like three point one all the way across, or RB report three point one, three point two, three point three, and then pass?
Yes. You wanna just go ahead and do all of yours?
We're doing all of it.
You'll do elementary, correct?
Hi, good evening for night. Okay, so I am starting with engaged, well-rounded students, and I'm presenting on behalf of all three elementaries for this pillar. So we marked a major change as three point one, and some of the reasons that we marked that were that we're moving ARC into all of second grade and up through fifth grade. So that is gonna be a major change for our campuses. ARC allows us to teach reading through content so that...
It's like, do you not use acronyms? Or say what ARC is?
Oh.
Like I know what it is, but I don't know if we all do, and I don't know if everybody else does.
Thank you. American Reading Company is ARC. So yes, I apologize for that. Did I use any other ones?
Okay, I kinda lost the train of thought there.
Okay, so we are moving American Reading Company into the second half of second grade and up through fifth grade. And as I mentioned, that allows us to teach content through our reading curriculum, which engages our students. The second point with three point one is our attendance, which we've already spoke to a little bit tonight. And having that consistency with our students requires that we want them, that we need them on campus. So we have developed some plans on our campuses to encourage our students to be there every day unless, you know, obviously they're sick or have something major going on. So one of those things is they're doing a color sheet with their class every day. They color in a letter. And when the color sheet is, the letters are all built in, they get a class reward, like socks, or bring yourself the animal, or whatever. And then we're doing, at the end of the nine weeks, all the kids that have perfect attendance get pizza with the principals on our campus.
They're all a little bit...
We're all kind of doing our thing, but that's, that's an example of what I'm doing on my campus. Okay, would you like me to move to three point two before I take questions? Three point two, we marked as a minor change. We were, we were talking about adding clubs centered around student interest on our campuses. I believe this hill and this block have done some of that already on their campus. It will be new to RB Godly, but we marked it as a minor change because some of that has already been in place. So we will do surveys with students and ask things that they're interested in and try to form clubs around that on our campuses. Three point three was marked as a minor change. We are focusing on the word promote, so promoting those students' successes. What are we doing to shout those out and to, and to celebrate our students, and what are we celebrating? So we are recognizing attendance. We will still do Wildcat Kid. And my campus has a program called Caught Being Legendary. So if you are caught going above and beyond on campus, any staff member can give any student a Caught Being Legendary certificate. They come to the office, they get their picture made, they get a prize. And then on Fridays, at our school-wide assembly on Fridays, they get to come on stage and we all, we celebrate them. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, so I will be five. We'll do all the elementaries. So we chose to work as an elementary team since we're all kind of experienced in various levels that we have now put together. We're streamlining that. So we felt like we were pretty much all on the same system. We'll see here in a minute, there's one little difference, but... So five point one, we talked about staff member committed to GIST values, principles, and culture. And we said a minor change in that simply for the fact that we're working as new campuses to make sure that our campus values align with the district values. So not that we don't agree with those, but we just need to bring that culture in with the new staffs since we've rearranged and making sure we have a good foundation there. So we felt like that was just a little bit of a minor change that we were needing. And five point two, that one talks about every staff member contribute to the benefit of students. And we feel like through our new recruiting practices and the way we have had a much stronger pool of individuals to interview and select from and fill in our positions, that we have individuals who are very committed to the students and to the processes. So we felt like we're kind of at a maintained level for that particular one key question. And then five point three, talking about training aligned with the mission, vision in the district. So as Ms. Dixon mentioned, our American Reading Company being new at some of our grade levels, we felt like there was some training, obviously, that we wanna make sure that teachers have that go along with that to make sure that they are prepared to really use that curriculum effectively and efficiently and with fidelity in the classroom. And so that's where that went, is that a minor change because we're not doing a major overhaul to all of our professional learning, but we are, you know, really streamlining it particularly to that particular area.
So are we using Wildcat U to be able to support this?
Yes, so Wildcat U definitely aligns with all of this. And we still have our mentor training that we're doing, you know, in the younger grades that have been teaching it. We wanna make sure that those teachers that are coming in, you know, they also are trained as well. So we have our mentor training on campuses also.
I am reporting on seven, which is safety and wellbeing. Seven point one is about our learning spaces and how they're designed around the needs of our students. And this is really the only difference between the three campuses because Pleasant View, of course, by nature, have its own collaboration spaces. And RB Godly and Legacy, we would like to talk about creating some collaboration spaces in the future. So that's just maintaining, consider change for the two of us. For seven point two, do students feel safe at Godly? We put minor change across the board. We've implemented some new safety protocols in the classrooms, and that includes what we call stop the prop, which is we don't prop doors open, especially the outside doors. We do daily checks on that, and then be nice, check it twice, meaning when the door shuts, especially an exterior door, you check to make sure it's fully secured. Staff is required to wear their badges all day, every day, and then visitors will have matching, like across campuses, bright yellow ladders, so we know that they're visitors to the campus. And then seven point three talks about a student's whole health as a part of our culture, and we are maintaining that because we are gonna continue much of what we've already been doing with character and leadership lessons. We're gonna continue to talk about seven habits. We did add in Wildcat Roars for all three elementaries. I put on posters so everyone will know what they support, even though I say it every morning. Wildcat Roars is something we talk about with the kids every day, and it stands for respect, ownership, attitude, responsibility, and safety. So those are just qualities that we talk about with them every day. And of course, we're gonna keep Wildcat ambassadors for each campus, and we're all, all of our counselors have been working together to create a system on how they're gonna interview those kiddos and select them for, to be ambassadors for us. And then for seven point one, do we promote and support culture of respect? Again, the Wildcat Roars is something that we are doing as a minor change, and then we're all doing a behavior, a positive behavior referrals, which I think we're all calling in something a little bit different, but it's a way to recognize kids for doing, you know, being good leaders, showing the Wildcat Roars qualities, and just being good citizens.
So the brochure I saw you referring to, is that something that can be shared with us as a RB or something?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so back to three point one on engaging students. So Tom and I are together as one with our plans. So the major change for this one essentially comes from sixth grade because we are taking American Reading Company up through sixth grade. And so they have started the units this school year, and so that is definitely a major change for sixth graders. For three point two and three point three, we are maintaining where we are at.
So. So as far as three point two goes, the values and interests of our students, we feel like, as is, as a middle school, we do a good job of trying to get an interest inventory and the survey data, especially second semester, common schedule, selection time, things like that. And we are slightly limited with our course offerings and our capabilities simply because, you know, we're a middle school, and there's a lot of stuff that's required to be taught, and, you know, the electives involve growing programs. So at this time, we always maintain for those things. For five point one, we also believe Wildcat U and our mentor processes and procedures has done a really good job. We also had, at the middle school, less turnover than we had the past few years. So we do believe that our staff members are aware and invested in our values here at Godly ISD. For every staff member contributing to the benefit of students, a minor change there, just on some of the processes and procedures we go through with our grading policies, holding the students to a high standard as far as classwork goes, get their work in on time, and keeping those standards very high. And then training aligned with the mission and the vision. We said maintain, but consider a change as far as, you know, we get a lot of data, we get a lot of map, a lot of star, a lot of state data, consider looking at different trainings and ways to utilize that data in the future. And kind of staying with the two elementary schools, with the learning spaces, we are bound with what we have, furniture and classroom space-wise. Students feeling safe, again, that's the same thing, two different initiatives, stop the prop. You know, we're checking those exterior, interior doors on a daily basis, really period by period. And promoting the culture of support and respect. The, we have the same positive office referrals, positive behavior intervention support systems, things like that. Again, changing up our processes, maybe allowing the counselor more time to get into the classrooms and teach some of those character lessons and see students on an individual and a group basis.
And the counselors have a whole scope and sequence, like our thing for this month is school pride. And so hitting that during our morning assembly with our students, and then that flows into homeroom, and it just flows into the lunchroom. So just kind of keeping that theme at the forefront for the kiddos so that hopefully will stick.
What do y'all do for school pride? Like, can we get a few statements? What do you do?
So right now, it's, we love our building, take care of our building. Because when you left it in May, it was rough, and the custodians did a great job, and it's really beautiful. And just pick up trash if you see it. Go above and beyond. Don't make a mess in the cafeteria. So that's kind of beginning of school stuff. It eventually leads into, a lot of times, we like to do the fight song to leave out for morning assembly. We've done that before. Teach them the alma mater, which we didn't really do as much with K and one, but, you know, sixth graders might can read those words. So just those types of things. And then promoting, oh, Spirit Fridays for sure. And then promoting like the high school sports for them to go and watch football. Are they nuts? It's super fun.
All right, for the high school, one of the things we learn in these tops of trainings in CVA, I've gotten the privilege, I've gotten to do a lot of these. I know the elementary has a lot of changes with the buildings, the new things coming in. But one of the things they constantly report to us is if you try to change more than 20% of the system at one time, you're going to fail because you can't focus on that much change at one time. So, you know, some of these, some of these areas are happening now, and some are happening in other areas because there are seven total pillars that affect this. But for the high school, for engaging students, we focused a lot in the, Katie Lowery and Shonda Christensen are facilitators at the high school, and they did a really good job this year talking about this building is built really innovatively, and it's exciting to use, but at times, high school kids can get a little lazy sometimes and take advantage of some of the cozy spaces around here. So we focused a lot on like, what a culture of learning looks like, and how to use spaces when you have more freedom, what a workplace would expect and what a job would expect. And so we've done a lot of work with that on when kids are out there, what it should look like, and how they should use those spaces effectively. And Ms. Lowery and Ms. Christensen have really led the work on teaching teachers of how to have a culture of learning. So we're just really grateful for the work they did in service. And teachers created some norms that our campus improvement committee will adopt and accept, and then will post those norms around the school of if you're in a collaboration space, the CLI, or any just open forum like that, here are the expectations of every kid while they're in these spaces, just so they know that. Promote and facilitate interest of our students. This is one where we're leaning on the middle school a little bit. You know, our ultimate goal is that kids graduate and they figure out what to do next. There's a lot of things to do that's really hard for kids to choose from, and maybe they don't know what's out there. So the middle school is doing the Zello survey is what it's called. It used to be career cruising. It just helps students understand some interests and passions they might have, and how those relate to future career fields. And then that allows us to make sure with Ms. Nixon back there in CTE of what are we offering kids? Are we making sure we're aligned with things they can take? Things like that. We also have some plans of offering some inventories and surveys to kids at high school, so kids can see if what they did in eighth grade matches where they are in tenth grade year, junior year, and they're still on path with what they want to do when they graduate. So that's the change we're making there this year. And then we're just maintaining on promoting students to set success and strengths. We do a lot of great things, and people promote that quite a bit. So we feel we're good on that one right now. There's always things we need to better, but it's just not our emphasis right now. And then for five, we're maintaining a lot of things here as well. We did have a lot of turnover this year from what I'm used to normally. We had 15 teachers this year, but we feel we have really made a positive impact on a lot of those that came on board. It is a different vibe and culture right now. So we're really excited with what the new teachers are doing. And then just the training aligned with the vision and mission of the district, that's where we got on board with our culture of learning again and how we're using the spaces. It affects this area for what teachers are doing and what the expectations are of how they teach things and do things. So it's the same spot there. And then our last one, the same on seven, too, is everybody else, Stop the Prop, you know, which sometimes affects us more because we have the coaches and extracurriculars where they're all over the place. Our coaches have taken it very seriously, and our extracurriculars, whether it be Ag or anybody else, which I'm very appreciative of. And our kids have too because we've put some standards in place that they'll face discipline if they prop these doors. So much that the Grandview High School principal called me and was like, what are y'all doing? And I think they're doubting as well. Just making sure the kids, if they prop doors, they're going to, they're going to face some consequences because you just, you just can't prop doors anymore. That's the easiest way to keep people out that don't need to be in the school. And then the last one, we promote the support of culture of respect. We instituted a little bit of a new system as far as discipline goes with our teachers. So our teachers have an ability to assign refocus rooms in their class for just minor misbehaviors, nothing that's big. If it's big, it still comes to the office. But it gives the teachers some teeth to do it in their classroom immediately and fix that behavior right now instead of, okay, it's got to go to the AP, and the AP will see them later, and then it's delayed, and then it's three days later, and we don't even know what we're doing anymore. They do it right now and fix it right now. So they're working on that. And then Coach Lowery has taken a real strong stance with the boys' side of athletics about attitude and culture of the boys and how they're acting. And I really appreciate the stance he has taken. And that's just, you know, something good he's doing where he's trying to make sure that what we do out there on the fields, whether it be court or fields or anything on the boys' athletic side, that there will be an attitude and a culture, that people will respect Godly and Godly will be respectful. We'll compete, we'll compete with anybody, but there will be respect, and they'll know that Godly has good kids. So appreciate Lowery and his efforts to make that happen.
I have a question. What do we need to do to get that happening on the girls' side?
I think the girls have been focused on it a little more already because Shogo has been here for so long, so there's already been that culture of things going on for the most part. Lowery being new, and the first year he came in with COVID and everything else kind of turning over, it's just been, it's been, it's kind of spinning wheels for him to get that going. So it's, it's the Ladanian Tomlinson Foundation that we bring in for that side, and they do a lot of coaching and how they do those things. So I think the girls have it going on. I think the boys really needed to. It's an area Lowery chose to focus on and take care of, so.
That concludes. But before I do, I do want to always take an opportunity to commend our principals, the job they do. It's phenomenal, the work they do for kids, but how we come, how this group comes together, the pouring work, and they do it for kids. They love kids. And sometimes work's messy, and sometimes we butt heads, and sometimes we have disagreements, but we all, but we do it from the same place, that ultimately we want what's best for kids. And sometimes we might disagree about how to do that, but this group does just an exceptional job. And I couldn't be happier to work with them, or pleased to work with them, and just love the work that we're doing with them. So wanted to just make sure I mention that. So thank you.
Hey, Mr. Carden, so just a big thank you to you and the principals and APs in putting this together.
Yes, sir.
I know those of us from the board were pushing to get CVA something going. We had some, some challenges, and I know there was some concern over implementing without fully, fully vetting and having fully matured. But I do appreciate you putting it out there, getting it started, and if we need to make adjustments, we'll make adjustments.
Right. And that's what this is all about, making adjustments. And this is going to get better. That's, that's the other exciting thing. And I'll go grab that out of my backpack so we, I've just got one copy, so that I can pass around so that y'all can see.
Thank you.
Mr. Flood, if this kickoff feels like... Next, new staff update. Do we have any new staff? It's the last board meeting, Principal? Oh, I guess we, yeah, I guess we do have two sitting here. Guess we have Jet Meda, our new communication director, of course, Kate Barnes right here, my new boss. Principals, do you guys have any new ones since the last meeting?
I have one.
One?
I have one. I replaced a DLR teacher. She started the second day of school.
The teacher's second day of school?
Her name's Tracy Talbot. She's in E-Lar and Social Studies for sixth grade.
Sixth grade E-Lar?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hey, Rich.
Of course, there's, yes.
I have one, too. She's a 504 testing clerk. She's new to us for a new hire that we added. She's awfully up in the front, so you might see her a lot. Her name is Michelle Farrar. So if you do see her, she's helping out in there a little bit. She's going to help us with 504 and testing, which is just, testing is so big at the high school. It's grateful to have her. So she just didn't start since the last meeting.
Okay, thank you guys very much. Next is support calendar update. I think those should be already on your, on your calendar. And that's all for Super Ten Force.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into business items. First, we'll consider the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the boardwork session, July 18, 2022, minutes of July 21, 2022 meeting, district financial report, district tax report, and district monthly investment cash flow.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Krista, a second by Craig. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll consider a budget amendment. Brad?
Speaking of final. Final budget amendment for the 2021-22 school year. We introduce an audit adjustments that will be just reclassing expenditures and then other adjustments to, should we cover all of our function budgets by the end of the year for the audits? Like, any other, any unusual auditing is allowed.
You said the vast amount of the budget of this amendment is actually just going back and forth between moving things in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Moving amounts in the budget.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendment for the general fund and food service fund as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Terry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number three is presentation, and we will present the 2022-2023 professional development plan. Dr. Cottle?
So as you may recall, just last month, a new policy went into place that the board has to approve the professional development plan. We don't have to do this tonight. We wanted to give you time to look it over and review it, and ask questions next month. I did include the plan. We did take it to the district improvement committee in the spring before we went into the summer and made plans for what we were going to do at the beginning of the school year. I have included there all of the training that we did at the beginning of the year, which you will see aligns very closely to what we're working on in our community-based accountability. You'll see safety and security, engagement, student engagement, and an effective teaching. And then we also have our Wildcat U, which we are going to make a change this year. We have 55 new staff members. And as we were sitting at our curriculum training, we realized that's a lot of people. So we're going to break them into elementary and secondary. And our assistant principals and our facilitators are going to help with the training this year. We're going to continue to follow the same, the topics that we've done, the pillars. We're going to go in depth. We're going to bring in people from the district, but we're going to break them up. So it's a little more focused on what they're doing at their levels. We've been doing some great things with our facilitators getting in and working with the new teachers from even during the summer, getting them on boarded and bringing in some new things. So I just wanted to give you a chance to look over the plan. If you have any questions next month, we can review it again, and then we can approve it next month or the next month, whenever you're comfortable.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Cottle? Okay.
Number four, we'll consider approving the 2022-2023 Godly ISD budget.
Okay, this is the same budget we've been talking about since April, pretty, pretty much in depth, a disbalanced budget. We know we're going to have to really work on our attendance strategies because we need to get kids in the seats to make the budget work post-COVID. We know we need to, Brian is going to have a focused effort to, to keep an eye on our expenditures as well, because with opening a new campus and just our growth, it's, it's, it's getting tougher and tougher. So we've got to get kids here, get the seats, and we've got to watch our expenditures. But this is the same budget that we've seen last couple of months with Dr. Cottle. Any questions for Brian?
I'll make a motion to approve the 22-23-2023-2023 general fund interest in sinking and food service budget as presented and recommended.
A motion by Marissa, a second by Dennis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number five, we'll consider adoption of the Godly ISD 2022-2023 property tax rate.
So as you guys can tell, this is a tax rate decrease. This fourth straight year, you guys have decreased the tax rate. The ATR that our community passed did increase it, but the tax rate that you guys have passed has increased, has decreased the last four years. As you see there, it's going to go from, what's it going? It's down?
Down, down to 2 cents.
Yeah, almost, almost a two cent reduction. Questions for Brad, Brad, please?
I'll make a motion that the property tax be decreased by adoption of the tax rate for $100 valuation of 0.9746 for M&amp;O, and 0.5 for interest in sinking, for a total rate of 1.4746 as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Terry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number six, we'll consider adoption of the Hill College Godly ISD property tax rate.
This is also a tax increase. It does increase Hill College revenue because our land values. It's a tax rate decrease. It increases Hill College revenue because of our values have gone up, but it is a tax rate decrease. Excuse me.
I make a motion to adopt the Hill College Godly ISD property tax rate of 0.024210 for $100 value. Proposed tax rate increases total taxes in Hill County Godly ISD by 8.9% as presented and recommended.
Second.
A motion by Terry, a second by Marissa. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. So Brian, can you remind me and the, the audience what the current Hill College tax rate is?
The current Hill College tax rate is 0.26, oh, no, 0.26, so it's, it's almost a two cent, two tenths of cents. It is a decrease, and it will increase to $1.99. Actually, it makes it all the way down to $3.00. So it's like a 24 dollars, 21 cents.
You said it was 0.26, what?
26 and 92.
Add two.
Okay, we have a motion by Terry, a second by Marissa. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number seven, we'll consider a resolution of the Godly ISD board trustees declaring support for the Johnson County Active Threat Response Protocol.
So as you know, we've hosted the two Johnson County safety summits after the rally. We invited all the law enforcement jurisdictions in Johnson County. Most of all of them did attend. It was led by Sheriff Adam King. This is basically the fruits of their labor. It basically says that the first officer on the scene is the man, and that we will not wait until we go in immediately. And this is just a resolution in support of this protocol.
I make to approve the resolution of the Godly ISD board trustees declaring support for the Johnson County Active Threat Response Protocol as presented and recommended.
Second.
A motion by Krista, a second by Craig. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number eight, we consider a resolution for the extracurricular status for the 4H organization of Tarrant County. Number eight, now, this is our annual approval we have to do for Tarrant County 4H organization.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for extracurricular status of the 4H organization of Tarrant County as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
A motion by Marissa, a second by Dennis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Number nine, we'll consider Laura Miller, Brittany Meyer, Robin Paul, Jacqueline Jones-Doyl, Elena Woolley, Krista DiStefano-Lee, Jordan Peljak, and Kate Marshall as adjunct faculty members of GIST. And these are the adjunct faculty members that will be working for kind of 4H.
I make a motion to approve the Tarrant County 4H organization adjunct faculty members as stated.
I'll second.
A motion by Terry, a second by Krista. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. A motion by Terry, a second by Craig to adjourn, feeling no objections from the board, we stand adjourned at 9:00. Thank everyone for coming on time.